Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm David Crane and I'm here to be the moderator tonight for the Hamilton Central School Board of Education Meet the Candidates night. Just to give you a bit about the format, the three candidates here are seeking to fill two positions and I'm going to give them some time to speak to why they are running for the Board of Education, what they hope to bring to Hamilton Central School as a Board of Education member. And after that, we'll proceed to questions. These have been put together hereby by the questions that have come into the school and have been given to me late this afternoon. We have quite a number. We'll keep going until we get through them, but each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. There's one question that will have slightly different format and I will explain that when we get to that question. For now, I would like to ask our candidates to give a brief introduction and tell us why they are running for the school board. I'll start with Ellen Watson.
Okay, how is that volume wise? We're good. So I am Ellen Larson. I am a family physician here in town. We've lived in Hamilton now for coming on 16 years. I'm also a Colgate grad, so this was a little bit of coming back here for me. And one of the reasons we came back here was because even then I fell in love with this town and this community and this school. I am running for reelection for the board. I'm finishing up a three-year term. The first time I ran was because it was time to look for a new superintendent and I wanted to be able to have an active role in that. And I'm running again now because I feel like I finally have sort of an understanding of what the school board is and what the school board does and I finally feel ready to do the job. And my term is up. And so this school is important to me because of the role it plays for my family, the role it plays for my neighbors and the people I take care of at work and for the community that I consider my home, so.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Our next speaker will be Travis Ames, who is the new candidate. Travis?
Hi, everybody. As you said, my name is Travis Ames and I'm excited to be here tonight. Since my opponent's a town doctor and a retiring teacher, it's fair to say that you all know the least about me, so allow me to tell you about myself. I grew up in a neighboring town and I moved to Hamilton in 2003. I graduated from Orangeville State College in 2001 with a degree in furniture production and business. Since then, I've been employed as an architectural mill worker for a family business in Nelson. I'm an HCS taxpayer and parent. My daughter, Emiliana, is in the elementary school. I'm surrounded in life by people involved with school districts in all capacities and know the important role each person plays in a school district. In fact, my fiance is an elementary teacher, but don't hear, don't worry. So I know how important teachers are too, because that's important. I've regularly attended and participated in board meetings for the past three years and I'm currently a member of two board committees. As a parent, you do whatever is needed to provide the best opportunities for your child. Working to provide the best opportunities for students at HCS is paramount. HCS could benefit from a voice like mine. I'm a hard-working, blue-collar, single parent who is well-informed and respectfully vocal. HCS is a remarkable school and I would embrace the opportunity to serve on its board.
Thank you very much. And we have Harry Jarko, also a new candidate. And Harry, will you please give us an introduction?
Well, thank you for coming, those of you who are here. I am going to give you an abbreviated version of what I already wrote in Dexter, Hamilton. Don and I moved to Hamilton 30 years ago. All three of our kids went to Hamilton Central School from first grade through graduation. As soon as we moved here, I got involved in the community. I began coaching ASO. I was the treasurer of ASO. I was the treasurer of Little League. I was the treasurer of the hockey program once I foolishly allowed my kids to play hockey. When my kids got too old to play youth sports, I switched over and I became a SOMAT volunteer and I was a volunteer driver for over a decade. I've been a teacher here at Hamilton Central School for 24 years, teaching social studies at every level from seventh through 12th grade and every course that the school offers. I've also coached at least two sports a year, every single year since I've been here. Over 10 years ago, I became the director of the Village of Hamilton Recreation Program, an opportunity that's enabled me to be in touch with our littlest kids, kids that I didn't teach, and that's allowed me to work with high schoolers and middle schoolers in a setting outside of school, so I've gotten to see what they're like when they're not in my classroom, similar to the opportunities afforded me by being a coach. At every stage in my career, I've tried to give back to the Hamilton community and I've almost always focused my efforts on children in this community. I'm retiring at the end of the year, but I'm not ready to give up being an advocate for the children of this community. Hamilton has become my family. While three of my boys attended, as I said, and I'll be forever grateful to the teachers in this school at every level for the wonderful education, both academic and character education that my sons received. I'm proud of the work I've done as a teacher and the work that my colleagues do every day for the children of this community. I believe that the heart and soul of a healthy community is its public school system and I want to work to build upon the traditions and legacy that make HCS an outstanding school. I believe I have a lot to offer. It would be an honor to serve you and this community as a member of the HCS school board and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Eric. We did a quiet toss with Ellen here just a few minutes ago. She determined whether or not she would be the first to go. Ellen lost, so we're going to start with Harry on the other end. And the first question will be, for those parents, men and women who either are single parents or divorced, sharing joint custody, how would you accommodate more to these parents to meet needs or concerns when dealing with school issues? Harry?
If I understand the intent of the question, I'm assuming that the question refers to the schools effectively communicating with all parents and all caregivers for a child. We've got a school tool. Our teachers and our counselors meet together frequently to make sure that we're communicating effectively with parents. I hope that it happens as frequently as I believe that it does, but mostly I think that the meaning of the question is to make sure that with blended families and that all parents and caregivers are in communication with the school and we're doing together what's best for the child.
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
This one, yeah, I don't usually like to talk about this kind of stuff, but I'll share this with you. I'm a single parent. My daughter, like many other students at HCS, has two homes, so I can personally tell you that single parents face difficulties with HCS. It's not just HCS. Single parents struggle with all schools. I can, I actually have it easy compared to some parents. There's a lot of parents in the districts who are the mom and the dad. What struggles do we face? How could HCS be more accommodating to us? Where do I begin? One thing that affects single parents is something that isn't just an issue single parents face, but a lot of school events take place during the day and it's really hard for single parents a lot of times to take time off from work. What this leads to is your child often feeling kind of out of place because why isn't my parent able to come to the school function? So that's one small thing. I know they already have. I think HCS could look at professional development programs for the staff that might touch on these issues and others proven solutions with today's reality of mass single parenthood. It's kind of hard to talk about because many difficulties are situational. It's hard to give examples in a short period of time. But I feel that being a single parent, I would bring that knowledge to the board and since so many HCS parents are single parents, I think it would be nice to have someone on the board that could personally speak for them. It would give the board a little bit of diversity. That's number two.
Thank you. Ellen?
Again, I think in the end, much of it comes to what's already been said, but I can't read the mind of the person that wrote that question or the needs that they have. And so I think that that comes back to communication and how to open those methods of communication, even find out what the concerns are, to begin to even figure out how to meet those needs. And so I think it really comes down to forging lines of communication, which has been an active process, still in the works. Finding the people within the building that would be able to help meet the needs that are arising and then how to set up a system to be sure that those pieces continue to be carried out and that there isn't good communication for a day or two and then it all falls apart again and everything's back to where it started. So I guess what I would say I would want to see is communication and finding a way to engage all of the necessary parties, all of the members of those families that need to be engaged and a way to follow through.
Very good, thank you. The second question, Travis, we'll start with you. Being on the school board, you will be involved in both educational issues and the business side of running a school. What business experience or knowledge do you bring to the table that would make you more qualified for the position?
What business? What business?
Business experience or knowledge do you bring to the table that would make you more qualified for the position?
When you hear me say I'm a woodworker, you might think I have no knowledge of business principles. I do, however. My college degree was not only in furniture production, but business as well. The concept was to learn everything involved with running a business, so I took classes in everything from accounting to HR management. It's worth noting the HR part, as it has come to discussion in the board meetings in recent months, so that would be helpful. Maybe most importantly is I've made it a point over the last couple of years to study up on the business side of schools. I've done that through research, asking questions when I didn't know, lots of questions, probably too many. And I've also attended school functions like budget coffees and budget hearings. There were many budget coffees this year. I know Ellen, you were able to go to a couple. I'm not sure about you, Harry, but they were very informative too. But back to what business knowledge I have, it's that, you know, I got it in college and also I worked for a family business and I've come to learn firsthand how important running a business is and that you need to be smart. It's important to remain fiscally responsible, ensure that what you are doing is by the So that's the knowledge I would bring.
Okay, Ellen?
I think I can honestly say that I don't have any of what you would consider traditional business training or education or experience. I think the biggest experience I can bring at this point is the last three years on the school board and working with Matt to understand the business side of these things and learning on the job. In addition, my day job has put me in the role of being in a leadership position in that job as well, which nobody wants to think of medicine as a business, but it is and it does come with needing to see business side balanced with something other than just dollars and cents and people management as well. And so I do think I bring some experience and knowledge in that, but I think at this point, the biggest experience that I bring is the last three years on the school board and the learning that that has brought as well.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I have no experience with a budget as large and as complex as HCS, but I, my father was a CPA and I managed to absorb next to nothing thanks to that. I was the treasurer of Little League, as I said, ASO and the hockey program, worked with those three budgets, but they're not on a scale or complexity as HCS. As the director of the Village Recreation Program for the last 10-plus years, I've come in under budget despite increasing students' salaries. I've come in under budget for the last eight years in a row while growing the program each of those eight years. Finally, with regard to HCS specifically, I've helped to negotiate the last three contracts, a lot of which involves not exclusively money, but in negotiating a contract and making hard choices and establishing priorities. It all has to take place within the context of the budget. So I do believe that I am sensitive to and aware of the complexity of the business side of HCS and the need to make wise choices within those budgetary constraints.
Okay, thank you. At this point, question three, we have a little bit of a change here in the format just for this question. It is addressed to one board member. The other two board members will have a chance to comment as well, but this question is directed to Harry. Harry, with your close involvement with the HTA over the past several years, is it fair to say that your candidacy as a board member may be a conflict of interest? If not, explain why.
No, it is not fair to say that my candidacy may represent a conflict of interest, any more than Travis is going to represent the interests of second-grade girls or Ellen representing the interests of doctors. I'm perfectly capable, as are the other two candidates on this board, of separating the fact that I was an AM and am proud to be a teacher from the fact that I'm also a member of this village. I will also be a retired person living on a fixed income and so I'm perfectly confident and comfortable that I can represent all the constituencies in this village to be fair to all and that the fact that I have been a teacher, I really don't think ought to be viewed as a liability when running for the Board of Education. I think that my tenure as a teacher and my experience and reputation in this community demonstrate that I can be fair-minded.
Thank you. Ellen, do you have any habits, thoughts you'd like to share?
Kind of a odd thing to comment, given that the question was for you. I think, I think my experience getting onto the school board was finding out that the job was not necessarily what everybody thinks it is. And so I am hopeful that should Harry be elected and find himself on the school board, that absolutely, that he would have the ability to separate that. I do think, I do think often the job is different than what people expect and so in some ways I think that does separate. I don't know, I also think that there are spots where somebody who is actively a teacher and negotiating on a contract, if the contract is not yet settled and they find themselves on the other side of it, I do think that that is a potential conflict of interest that needs to be openly discussed and considered. But I have to say that actually one of the things I could value most, especially as a new school board member, was having a teacher on the board with Terry Monty and having that perspective was something that was valuable.
Thank you. Travis, would you like to comment or express your thoughts?
Yeah, sure, I'll chime in. So the question had to do with Harry might have a conflict of interest because he's a teacher. Is that right?
Yeah, with his close involvement with the HTA over the past several years, is it fair to say that the candidacy as a board member may be a conflict of interest? If not, it might deter Harry's vote.
Yeah, right. I'll say this, I don't know him well. I didn't go to HCS. Harry's a good man. I really think that. If he feels he can be fair, I have to take him at his word at that. But it is worth noting that it is a fair question. Harry just mentioned that he has helped negotiate the last few teacher contracts. Now he'll be on the other end of the negotiating table. A board member doesn't actually sit in on the negotiations typically, but a board sets the terms of the contracts they're hoping to achieve and they ratify them. So it's fair to say that in your heart of heart, you might not have a conflict of interest, but subliminally, it might be there, but that's a decision you all are going to have to make. I can't make that for you. I take him at his word. I will say that any issue that would come my way as a board member that might present a conflict of interest, if I felt that I couldn't fairly or ethically vote, I would abstain from voting. That's a promise I would make. It is important for board members to be fair.
Ten seconds.
Okay. It's a fair question in terms of Harry and you as voters will have to make that up for yourself.
Okay, thank you. On to question four, and Ellen, this will come to you first. What can you bring to the board, do you bring, that sets you apart from the others? Ellen?
I think the thing that I can bring and do bring at this point that sets me apart from the other two candidates at the table is that I have spent the last three years on the board and I don't think that makes me anything special or any better. I think it just means that honestly, I have spent three years trying to figure out what it meant to be a board member and I feel now that I have a better understanding of that. I feel like there have been some concerns and issues that have been coming up, particularly over the past year, that I finally feel like I'm starting to understand and understand what the backbone of some of those things may be to be able to help move forward. And so I think the biggest thing that I can bring to the table is that, that knowledge and experience and growth and understanding that has happened over the last three years.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I am going to repeat myself, I'm afraid. I believe that I bring 30 years of experience in knowing this community, being part of this community, taking pride in what Hamilton Central has always been. I do believe that I understand how Hamilton Central School works at an intimate level. I do believe that I understand how it fits into the community at an intimate level and I believe that I have demonstrated the ability to be objective, the ability to be fair-minded and the ability to be thoughtful and not jump to conclusions or not make rash I believe that all three of us have that capacity, so I'm not sure that I'm differentiating myself, but I will stand up for myself.
Thank you. Travis?
Geez, that might be helpful to the A class, I guess. I got that going for me. I can also speak for those who feel that they've been forgotten by the district over the years, be it the single parents, the blue-collar workers, those that live outside the village lines or those who have grown up in this community and value its history. I have knowledge of the madness of the night of BOSI's, both from my attendance during high school for a workplace internship program they have to conversations I've had with employees there. The relationship with HCS and BOSI's is vital to its success. I'm a strong communicator and I'm not timid about letting others know how I feel about something. And yeah, there's others. And kind of it's very touched on, you know, it's not so much of a census par, it's we have a lot of things in common. We're all dedicated community members who love HCS and that means something.
Okay, we're on to question five and the questioner is asking, how do you feel about eSpark? Would there be continued funding? I feel it is a very good program. I have seen it firsthand with my granddaughter. She has excelled with the program a great deal. Travis, we'll start with you.
How much time do I have?
Ten seconds.
Oh, boy. You know anything about eSpark. That's more than two minutes. All right, for those who don't know, eSpark is a company that's basically a program you use with your iPad. It has a whole bunch of learning apps. It was first pitched as a last year's summer program where my child had a chance to use it some. The implementation of it was a mess, however, over the summer. There were many technical problems, so I can't really judge how it works. It was then put into plan that the whole elementary school would use it for this school year, with each teacher having to use, having each student have to spend something like half an hour a week or so on in the classroom each week. This is where things started to get crazy. First, the teachers were understandably not thrilled having a teacher change their classroom routine, so suddenly with them essentially learning on the fly with little training wasn't a smart move. A lot of parents were concerned about things like screen time, something called data mining, where people can hack into the system, or actually data mining is where the company basically sells the data they're getting. There was concerns of that. What they ultimately did was they made an after-school program for the educationally disadvantaged students, which got us into a focus district designation from the state. We can get into that later. How much time I got?
You have about 48 seconds.
All right. It costs $24,000 a year. You buy licenses, the least you can get are 200. We use about 50. It was paid for with focus district money. It was $24,000. We have to look towards the future how to pay for it. Are we, can we share with other school districts? If we do that, we have to start being careful with how we deal with other school districts. There's a 21st Century Grant in the works. Maybe that could help for it. I did just talk to Mr. Ellis about this a couple days ago. It's going to be used next year. The focus grant money is still around for one more year. After that, they're working on grant money to pay for it if they choose it, but ultimately I want the parent, I want the teachers to tell the administration if it's working or not.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, Ellen?
So I'm going to thank Travis for doing all the hard work and getting the history in the background on eSpark. I think the question of whether or not to continue using eSpark, if we take the funding piece out of it to begin with... if we take the funding piece out of it to begin with, is assessing whether or not this was a successful program. And I think that information needs to come from the teachers and the principals and the school leaders and the kids and families that were involved in this. Most of the people that I have talked to who have actively used it have found it to be a positive thing for their child and learning. Kevin just presented some information at the last meeting that I was not able to attend, but I did see on video. But I think the decision of whether or not to continue it depends on whether or not we think it's been successful or helpful. And then part of that becomes whether the expense justifies... Whether the benefit justifies the expense. And like Travis said, are there ways to decrease that expense? Or are there alternate resources for that support? But I think that information would need to come to the board and not be pushed out from the board.
Eric?
I'm going to make the question a little bit more general because I think that the real issue is how we use technology and how effectively we assess whether the technology that we bring to the school works for kids. eSpark, like anything else, whether it's smart boards or anything else, we can get the flashy new bells and whistles if teachers aren't provided with professional development and if there isn't follow-up study to see whether you're getting bang for the buck, then you're just throwing money at toys. We've got a lot of technology in the school. We've got to look very carefully at how we use it, how we purchase it. And most importantly, does it serve learning? I don't need a smart board if my kids are going to learn better with a pencil and paper. All my classes have, at my request, have online textbooks. And we're assessing whether that works for kids. We're assessing whether the technology we've got in the building is sufficient to support that. When we become dependent upon technology and can't maintain it, it's an issue. When we move over to technology and we've got kids and families in our community that don't have internet access, there are a variety and a range of unintended consequences and unintended issues to contend with. So I agree. I'm glad that Travis has phenomenal knowledge of eSpark. But I think that the bigger issue and I hope the real question has to do with technology, not being seduced by technology without doing the proper pre-work and post-assessment to make sure that it's serving kids.
Thank you. Okay. Question six. How do you feel about the NWEA tests? Ellen, we'll start with you on that.
So the question is, what are the NWEA tests? And the NWEA tests, as I understand it, are tests that are being used to benchmark individual student achievement. I frankly can't speak to whether they're the best test or any of those things. What I can speak to is that the administrative leaders in the building, at this point, as I understand it, are using those as a way to benchmark student gain, student success, and therefore a way to measure how successful curriculum is and those sorts of things. What I would say is, as a board member and not someone trained in education, I am actively learning about all of these things as they come. But I look to the principals and the superintendent to be the experts in that. And I look for them to look to the teachers to be the navigators of that. And so I count on them to share their feelings about those sorts of things. And as I understand it, I believe they are being used meaningfully at this point.
Eric?
I'm not going to waste your time. I don't... At my level at middle school and high school, I have nothing to do with the benchmarking of the NWEA tests. I have to say the same thing as Ellen. I would rely upon the administration and those who actually do the testing to assess whether they're effective. But I don't know much about them, so I don't want to waste your time.
Thank you. Travis?
I have some knowledge on the NWEA test. I've been to a few meetings on them and followed up on questions I've had. It's new to us this year. It was brought for a few reasons, partly because so many kids were opting out of the state test that the administration wanted a way to judge how well the students were doing, but also how well programs they've implemented over the years are working. At the moment, it's paid for with focus district money. The test costs $5.40 a student. The nice thing about NWEA tests is that they're adaptive. If a student gets a question wrong, they don't get another hard one. They go down a level. If they get a question right, they go up. It neither bores nor discourages students. They call it measures of academic progress. State tests don't work that way. And I've had discussions with parents and mostly teachers talking about how heartbreaking it is to watch certain students take a state test because they're doomed to fail. So that's the nice thing about NWEA. My main problem with it is something I've discussed with Kevin and others is that the NWEA test for reading in no way correlates with the reading program that we use here in the AAS reading classes. They use a program called LLI, Leveled Literacy Instruction. I can personally tell you that is superb. The teachers also use a form of benchmark testing that is excellent called Fontis and Pennell Benchmarks. This is used to track students' reading levels at set points of the year. So the NWEA test does not correlate with LLI. So it is partly being used to judge whether or not programs are working. It is going to give you false data on programs such as LLI. In the end, that's harmful. The main difference is the NWEA tests differ from the state ELA and math tests in that the NWEA test search for a student's needs, whereas the state test searches to see if a student is performing in grade level standards.
Fifteen seconds.
As a board member, I would prefer to hear not just from the administration on the NWEA test, but I want to hear from the teachers because they're the ones that see the students every day. They're the ones that should have the ultimate say on whether or not they like it.
Thank you. Okay. Question seven. What new ideas would you bring to the board? Eric, we'll start with you.
I... This isn't necessarily a new idea, but it's an idea that needs to be more effectively implemented. We need to have everybody in the school, from staff to teachers to administration, on the same page. We need to know what it is that we want to achieve as a school, how we want to see our school grow in the future. The district is currently engaged in a strategic plan. That's a part of the solution. The other part of the solution is more regular and more authentic communication. We need to be transparent. There need to be no secrets. There need to be no agendas. I would like to see our school at every level and with every member feel that this is a comfortable, honest, open community where persons can express their opinions without fear of repercussion, that their opinion is valued. And anything that we can do along that front will help to make Hamilton a strong and better place.
Thank you. Okay, Travis?
Was it new ideas? Is that what it was?
What new ideas would you bring to the board?
All right. First, it's probably important to understand the role a board member plays. A board member needs to stay out of the way, essentially. They need to monitor. There are a few fresh ideas I could bring, however, and some of them are new, I guess. What could I do? Accountability. If I'm wrong about something, I'll own it. If I feel the board as a whole is wrong, I'll own it. If the administration is wrong, I'd expect them to own it. The last thing I would want to hear as a board member is excuses. Excuses are not acceptable to me. I'd like to see the board and the administration have more foresight to learn to properly plan before taking on endeavors. You can't always do it, but I'd like to see the district be more proactive than reactive. Take the issue with teachers and the administration, for example, and ultimately, the teachers and the board. I saw that explosion happening way before. If proper communication steps had taken place and implemented earlier, I don't think it would have got to the point where it was showcased on the 11 o'clock news. Last, as a board member, in meetings, I would frequently ask questions towards the process behind decisions, not just to understand them for myself, but more importantly, to make sure that the administration and other board members have fully thought through these decisions through the eyes of all stakeholders involved. So those are the fresh ideas I would offer.
Thank you. Ellen?
Again, new ideas. I think in some ways, it's saying the same thing, but it's saying in different ways. And much of it is communication, communication, and communication. And that's within the building, without the building, and throughout the community. But anybody who knows me knows that I beat the drum about a book called Crucial Conversations, which has become something that I carry with me most of the time. And I would like to see us all learn how to communicate better. But part of what I would like to see as a board member, and again, I don't know that this is a new idea, but I think it is a shift from where we are now, is better clarifying everybody's role. And what I'd really like to see is the board to be in a situation where they're looking forward. They're looking at that policy and that plan and making sure that those are in place and are working and looking forward to what we need to be thinking about for the future. And I would like to see, you know, the administrators being experts in leading education and those sorts of things. And I would like to see the teachers be experts in what they do and being able to communicate and share their needs and their successes and their strengths and all of those things. And I feel like those are some of the pieces that are missing and that I would like to see grow.
Thank you. Our next question, Travis, you'll be the first one to address. Number eight. What are your thoughts on full-day pre-K?
David, I don't know if you know, but I've been come to be known as the pre-K guy. I've asked a lot of questions on that. First, let's say currently, we have two pre-K teachers teaching half a day. One of those teachers is a full-time employee. The other is about .7 full-time. Around winter time, about 15 kids or so move to a full day. I've asked in the past how much it would cost to run a full-day program. And I've been told quite simply, too much. Recently, I asked how much it's too much, what's involved. Matt and Dr. A really dug into the numbers and Kevin. And what do we got here? It'd be $85,000 additional cost to switch to full day. In theory, full day would help. But it's hard. I mean, $85,000 is a lot of money, especially in today's times. As a board member, I would continuously keep the thought in mind, though, and encourage a search for ways to fund it. I would love to have it. I think it would address a lot of our issues we talk about at budget coffees, about reasons why people want to move here. We talk about building the brand, so to say. I think full-day pre-K might be beneficial to the reasons people come here. But consequently, some people might not want their young child to go to full day. Maybe we'd have to be adaptive with it, offer an option. I can tell you this, though.
Ten seconds.
The two pre-K teachers we have at HCS are outstanding. And for the time being, at half-day, they're getting the best pre-K education they can get.
Thank you. Ellen?
So again, I think this is one of those... Another one of those things that I would defer to the educational leaders in the building. And that includes the teachers and the principal and the superintendent to really assess the needs of our kids and our community. And if they feel like it is absolutely critical for the kids of this community to have full-day pre-K, then we look at how to make it work. I think... I know that there is evidence of benefit. I wonder if there's evidence of wearing kids out, over-educating them too early, you know, all of this discussion of room for play. But I'm not an expert in that and I can't speak to that. And so I would ask that the educational leaders really assess the needs of the kids in the community and let us know what's best.
Thank you. Eric?
I would absolutely, positively advocate for full-day pre-K. The earlier we intervene with kids, the more payoff there is for the rest of their careers and the rest of their lives. If $85,000 is what it costs to provide an environment where kids... We... I'm going to back up a little bit. Our school population is changing. The needs of our kids are getting graver every year. The issues that they face at home and the challenges that our community and the families in our community face are becoming more complicated every single year. We see this in our counseling office. We see this in the number of kids who need a variety of remedial services. And it is my opinion that the earlier you intervene, the more you eliminate problems down the road. I think that we would have less dysfunction at the middle school and the high school if kids got an earlier head start, and I am using the word "head start" advisedly. I think that the Head Start program was a wonderful program. If you disagree, then you will disagree with my entire answer. But it is never too early to give kids a head start. And full-day pre-K is the way to go. It does not mean necessarily... It does not mean that you start cramming reading and ABCs and advanced calculus down three- and four-year-olds' throats. It means you provide them with a literacy-rich environment, with a numeracy-rich environment, and ample opportunities to use their kinesthetic sense to play connected to concepts that will become relevant academically in the future.
Thank you. Okay. Question number nine. What are your thoughts on the Hamilton International Students Program proposal? Ellen, we'll start with you.
So I'm actually on the... One of the members of the committee, along with Travis, for the International Student Program. And I actually think it is an opportunity to explore enriching the educational environment for our kids. Our kids already have a pretty rich educational environment. There's no doubt about it. They've got arts and music in a way that many schools don't anymore. They have the ability and the opportunity to explore things that is really rather remarkable for the size of the school. But I think it brings an opportunity to introduce kids in this area to greater parts of the outside world that they may not have access or experience with. And in a world and a society that is absolutely becoming an international community, I think it brings a significant potential for... Opportunity for our kids. I think everybody's a little worried and afraid about the what-ifs and the what-could-be's. I think everybody's a little worried and afraid about the what-ifs and the what-could-be's, and I think a lot of effort is being put into trying to safeguard against as many of those as we can. And I think if and when we decide to run with it, it's, would be best approached as a trial to see how it works for our kids and our community and our school. I think it also provides an opportunity to put more kids in seats in the high school, which gives us the opportunity to provide even more potential options and electives and those sorts of things in class sizes that are shrinking.
Thank you. Eric?
Kathy Savino addressed this question when it was posed in the past and raised some concerns. Paul Lehman addressed this question in, in board meetings and on several other occasions. I think that the notion of enriching the, the lives of our students by their not being exposed to, but being classmates with kids from all around the world or from various parts of the world is, has enormous potential. I think that we have to, Ellen referred to the what-ifs. The what-ifs are not trivial. The, I really do think that we have to look at, at all of the ancillary costs, monetary and otherwise, involved with bringing a lot of kids in who won't be here for 12 years, obviously, who won't be here for even four years, but who are going to be here for one or two. They will need, they will, they will have adjustment needs, they will have counseling needs, they will, despite the fact that, that I know that we are making efforts to make sure that kids coming in will have adequate English language skills, it's still going to be a drastic change. And so I think that, I think that the notion of enriching our kids' lives is a terrific one, and I think that it's something that should continue to be explored because the upside could be enormous. The experience of kids who are Rotary Exchange students in our school, both for them and for our kids, has been wonderful. Most of the Rotary Exchange students who come fit in, do want, do beautifully, and make this a much more fun place to be. And the International Student Program could do the same thing. But I think that we have to be clear-eyed about how we approach it and make sure that all of, all of the consequences, costs, and everything else are carefully considered, rather than, to quote from, from Travis, rather than have to be reactive about anticipatable but not anticipated issues that might arise.
Thank you, Eric. Travis?
Yeah, HISP. For those who don't know, it stands for Hamilton International Students Program. I know that comes to get crazy, it took me a couple of years to figure it all out. I am on the committee that's looking into this. It's possible it'll be presented to the board soon. I think we need more time, though, to make sure it's flawless. Recently, HCS staff, parents, and students visited Newcombe School up in the Arundex to visit Skip Hiltz. I believe that's the right pronunciation. He's an expert on it. The school is Newcombe. Newcombe started doing it because it was their only option, because their enrollment was so small. Almost connectedly, there's a school called Niskiuna that uses a similar program. They're at the other end of it. They are very populated and very affluent. We're kind of in the middle, so it doesn't work. It was pitched to be a cure to enrollment and a way to find income to continue doing the great things we do. I had a lot of the concerns we talked about, saw a lot of the benefits in the early end. That's why I wanted to be on the committee, because I knew that I saw both ends and I could look at it fairly. And as I've been on the committee, I can tell you I see the social side of it that's there. There's still a lot of worries there, there, though. My main worry is, is it fiscally responsible? I feel it would generate a small amount of income compared to the estimated cost of the work to run a program. I'm not going to get into the data, but you have to know that we're not going to hire any new employees for this. So the employees that are dealing with this program in whatever fashion are not going to be doing certain things they're doing right now. So the question I posed was, what does that labor hypothetically cost? Those employees are now going to have to do something else. What is the value of their hourly rate? I won't get into it, but it's substantial and it's worth taking note of.
Ten seconds.
If we got four kids in, it would be $22,000 roughly, because you cannot charge more than the out-of-district tuition rate you charge for a kid from Shiver, which right now is $5,500.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, number 10, and we'll start this with you, Eric. How confident are you in your ability to remain fair during your time serving as a member of the HCS school board?
That's essentially the same question I was asked about my ability to, to separate myself from being a teacher and a negotiator, and so I'm going to give the same answer. I have every confidence in my ability to be fair-minded to all constituencies.
Thank you. Travis?
Yeah, being fair as a board member is very important. My job is not related in any way to schools. By that, I mean I don't have any bond with any one group that would allow me to or be taught to side unfairly with another. Secondly, as a board member, I wouldn't be looking for close friends of the staff. Let me explain what I mean by that. I think it's important that you don't get too close with any capacity of the school district, because you will speak up when it's too late. That's how I could be fair. I believe in leading by example. So if I were to become a board member, I'd be asking the administration to be fair, and I would trickle down. And last, to being fair, I ask, I put my reputation to the question. I definitely could be fair as a board member.
Thank you. Ellen?
Again, I think if the answer to that question is no, I should step off the stage now. And so, yes, I have every confidence in my ability to stay fair. I think Travis is right, that there are times where you have to actively recognize and check your predispositions and your tendencies towards one thing or another. And sometimes those are conscious and sometimes those are unconscious. But, but part of that job is learning to recognize those and learning to check those and learning to be able to take that step back. But yes, I have confidence in my ability to maintain that.
Thank you. Okay. Number 11. Travis, we're going to start with you. What is the primary role of a public school board in education?
I'm going to skip my notes. I'm going to skip my notes here on that one. The primary role of the Board of Education, the board or the member, is that was the question?
Primary role of a public school board in education?
To set school board policies, one. To review and sometimes hire superintendents. To maintain that the, all the factions of the school district, be it the parents, the staffs, the taxpayers, are represented fairly. And, yeah, there's, there's so many roles, but one of the important things to remember is, as Ellen touched on, and I've learned over the years, too, there are a lot of things you can't do as a board member. You have to be really careful about private discussions you have with people. You, you have to be careful that people know that when, as a board member, when you're speaking to people, that they know that you're not speaking as the board. So that is another role of the board. There's many roles of the board, and, yeah, those are a few of them.
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
And it's a great question, and it's something that I mentioned early on, that I think in many ways, the, the role of the board isn't always what you think it is, even right up until the moment where you're there. And it's certainly not, I think, what a lot of people assume that it is. And the board does not play a role in many of the things that I think people assume that it does, and, and in some situations should not play a role. It's actually something I come back to often and kind of dig out the resources, okay, what is our job, where should we be, and where should we not be? I have the chump, because the last time I looked at it, and there's the list, I wrote it down, the last time I looked at it, one of, one of the resources that said, one of the most important jobs of the school board is to provide bathrooms for the school. So I thought that was important. But it's really about, the, the board's job is to be setting goals and direction, and it's responsible for the budget, and it's responsible for hiring a superintendent, it's responsible for making sure there are buses, and, and buildings and grounds are there, and that there are established rules in place for discipline, and that there's a functional cafeteria. And it's about making sure that the backbone of the school is there and, and a direction is set. And it's not about having its hand in, in everyday activities. It's actually, the school board's job in general is to stay out of the day-to-day activities and let those people who are the experts in those activities do those jobs. And again, the list goes on and on, but I...
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Being a member of the Board of, Board of Education, now Dr. Olson refers to them as trustees, and the first time I heard that surprised me. I've, I've come to like, to like that notion of trustees. The board doesn't, isn't responsible and ought not be micromanaging the school, but we are the guardians of this community in a sense. And we are, we are the guardians of the spirit that makes HCS, HCS. And I think that in terms of broad policy and in terms of continuity, in terms of taking, taking the long view, that it's essential that, that there be a group of people who look to make sure that the school maintains and stays on course. We have, I'm kind of surprised, myself included, that we've hardly mentioned children. We're here for kids, and we're here for education, we're here for learning, and every single thing that we do, we've got to be measuring in terms of, is it good for kids? Are kids learning? And the, so, so yes, we choose the superintendent, and no, we don't choose the teachers, and no, we don't set the curriculum, but we have to make sure that, that teachers understand what it means to be an HCS teacher. We need to, we need to make sure that, that decisions made, whether technology or building or, or whatever policies, that are they serving kids? And that's probably not in the book, but that's what I believe is the primary role, to be, to be the guardians of the spirit of HCS.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we're on now to question number 12. If we will start with Ellen. What do you foresee is the most difficult part of serving on the Board of Education?
I think I would say, from experience at this point, that one of the most difficult parts of serving on the Board of Education is the things that you can't do and the things that you can't say. There are so many times that you wish you want, you wish you could say or do something, and you can't. The other thing I foresee as the most difficult upcoming thing in the next three years is continuing to navigate this sense of culture and climate and communication, and, and who are we as HCS, and, and where do we want to be, and how do we continue to lead our kids in the best direction and do the best for them that we can with all of the other limitations and things that are imposed, sometimes from the outside and sometimes globally. So again, I think the most difficult challenges are continuing to navigate that path to effective communication and leading our kids and our school forward.
Well, I think that probably the most difficult thing, part of being a board member, not having been one, is that you have to be able to say no sometimes. We have been for a long, long time, the little engine that could. We have, we have so far exceeded any reasonable expectations, and now, for a variety of reasons well beyond the control of this community, those salad days may be over. And choices are, will have to be made, and they're not pleasant choices. So the board, somebody's got to eventually say no. And I just hope that when we do that, that, to glom onto my last answer, that when we say no, it's not compromising kids and that we never violate our, our beliefs or compromise our, our beliefs when we could have made a different choice or established a different priority, that we need to put kids first.
Thank you. Travis?
You know, come to learn that, when I first started coming to board meetings, I had a view of what a board does, and I was right in some areas, but I was wrong in a lot. But that's fine. I've come to really appreciate what a board does, and it's really stressful. I think Ellen knows that. So possibly keeping all of my hair might be the hardest. Kind of go, sorry, yeah, you're, you're good. Probably trying to keep everyone happy without any one group of people feeling alienated. You know, you can't please everybody. It's the simple state of it. It's about making the fairest decisions that you feel are necessary. There's some hard decisions within the next three years. There's the decisions over HISP, which is an international students program. There is a strategic plan proposal, which has a lot to it. And there's a future budget expense. The, the building needs work. The roof is failing. There's other things to the campus that will need to get done in the future. And there's the, trying to figure out the continuing needs of technology. I'm not going to tell you I'm an expert on it, I'm not, but it's important that we find a way to get a grip of what it is that HCS needs to stay relevant and to remain fiscally responsible. to stay relevant, and to remain fiscally responsible, and also to make sure what we're doing is what is needed. Those are probably the hardest things in the near future. And I think everything about being on board is hard, and I'm up for that challenge.
Thank you, Travis. Okay, we're on to question 13. If you were magically on the Board of Education right now, what would be the initial things that you would do in the first six months? Harry, we'll start that question with you.
I would build a wall. The most, I think the most pressing need is to is to complete the strategic plan. Until we agree upon where we want to be, we're never going to get there. I think that that's more important than some of the budgetary squabbles we may have. I think that we need, the other thing that we need to do is we need to address the issue of, as we said, communication, and that people continue to come to HCS, whether administrators, teachers, superintendent, students, and be glad we're here. We want this to continue to be a special place, and I think some work needs to be done in order to keep it a special place.
Thank you. Travis?
Could you repeat the question one more time to make sure I got it right?
Certainly. If you were magically at the Board of Education right now, what would be the initial things that you would do in the first six months?
Okay, the important part of the question is the "you." An individual board member has to be careful about what they try to set forward. That being said, one of my first priorities on a board, the board, would be to patch the relationship with the HTA. That's a priority, it's gotten to a bad state. We need to work to fix that. I would also work to set a tone of leading by example. Ultimately, if the teachers are teaching the students to do something, the teachers better be following the example they talk about, their administrators better be following the example that they're talking, and ultimately, the board, individual board members, need to practice what they preach. Something that I think is important for this year's board is to set a goal. Historically, the board sets their goals. This year, the board chose not to, to adapt the previous year's board goals, with the thought, the way I interpret it, that the strategic plan will be working on, and that should help tell the board what the goal is. The problem with that is, the board shouldn't have known that the strategic plan wasn't going to be done within the year. Secondly, the board needs to set its own goals. It's great we have a strategic plan committee, but they are not speaking for the board. I think a simple goal for this year would have been communication. I think a good goal for the board for next year would be to improve the relationship with the HTA, and to make sure that everyone in the building is getting along respectfully and professionally, because ultimately, we've set an example, and we need to set a tone as a board.
Thank you, Travis. Ellen?
So if I could magically transport myself back to three years before I was actually on the board, honestly, I would say I would spend six months absorbing and listening and learning, and hearing, is truly, I think, where a lot of that first six months went. At this point, you know, again, it's essentially, the question is, what would you see as the board's goal? And Travis is right. Each individual board member really can't have a plan or an agenda. They can have ideas that they share. But if the real question is, what do you see as sort of the overall biggest priorities over the next six months? I would agree that finishing the strategic plan, and really developing a long-term view of what we want HCS to be, with curriculum, with technology, with facilities, with what sort of supports do we need for these kids that are having bigger and bigger needs, and facing bigger and bigger challenges themselves? And all of those sorts of things. But I would also say, you know, that we need to continue to build some of the baby steps that were started this year at communication. And they're baby steps, but baby steps have to start somewhere, and continuing to build on that, and moving forward. And again, that's communication with the board, and HTA with the board, and administration with the board. And the community is really, when communication encompasses all of those things. But I would also like to see the board, if we're going to talk about communication, set a priority of everybody within the building, within the community, learning to communicate with each other as well. So, and again, that's part of culture and the example, and all of those things as well.
Thank you. Okay, question 14, which is next to the last question. Sure you were all waiting about that. Since the merger talks, there have been conversations around the sustainability of Hamilton Central School in the current way it operates. Can you share any ideas that you have to increase revenue for Hamilton Central School? Travis, who started with you?
Okay, so the merger, it's in the past, we'll start there. The district decided they don't want that. Now, the question gets to, how do you address the issues that brought us to that point? One of the things is to talk about it. One of the budget coffees, as Matt talked about in the hearing, about 10 of us maybe, it might be shooting high. Usually, there's like three people there. But we had a really good conversation about why. Why is enrollment down? What does a low enrollment mean? There were a lot of really good talks about that. So, some of that is financial, but that's first and foremost, we need to talk. What can we do monetarily? There's the talk of the HISP program, but we got to make sure that it actually is making money. Just because money's coming in doesn't mean that money isn't being spent wisely. We have to, so this is a tricky one, because there's ways to bring in money without spending money. We need to look at our community partners, be they within our own community, you know, colleges, organizations, but also looking into shared services. We do this some, we go through BOSI's for a lot of stuff. We go through MoRic for some stuff. Some things we share with other schools. You know, I talked about East Park, there's a possibility that we could share the cost of that with other school districts. There's ways to bring in money to anywhere, but we have to remember that we are a public school, we're not a private school. So, anything we do to bring in money needs to be fair to all the taxpayers. And it needs to be the right thing, for the students, for the teachers, for everybody.
Thank you. Ellen?
You know, sustainability and class sizes is one whole discussion, but the question asked, how do you increase revenue? And that's a great question. And frankly, up until very recently, the conversations have all been about, how do we decrease spending, and not about how do we increase revenue? And I think that is a shift in how we look at things, and not just looking at maintaining costs, which is really what shared services does. Shared services decreases cost. I guess it could bring in revenue if we're looking at some special ed programs that bring tuition, or, you know, students in that do pay for that. But we're already sharing a lot of services, and the shared services study showed that there wasn't a whole lot more to share. I do think tapping into BOSI's has provided opportunities for us to get reimbursement for things. Some of those things that happen through BOSI's, we are able to get reimbursement from the state from, where if we did them outside of BOSI's, we cannot. HISP, while I have to admit, several, several years ago, under previous leadership, when the idea of an international student program was first presented, it was presented as a moneymaker. And in the words of somebody at that meeting, looking at kids as cash cows is not a good thing. And so I will say, from my perspective with HISP on the table right now, HISP is not intended to be a moneymaking venture. It's intended to be an opportunity that needs to be cost neutral, from that standpoint. I think maintaining those relationships with the community partners who do contribute to us, but I also don't think we can keep knocking on their door and asking for more and more. And grants, there have been grants this year, and I'm going to steal the words of Dr. A., because this is Dr. A.'s concept, and that is, if we continue to make HCS desirable, the one way we can bring in money, or bring in funding, revenue, is to bring in tuition-paying students. And if HCS is the place to be, those that have the expendable income and can send their kids here, that is another way to improve both class size and increase revenue.
Thank you.
Well, the question is about how to increase revenue, and I don't think that, I don't think that people have forgotten that possibility. We're a public school, and we're bound by the state. We can't control what the state gives us, although we can lobby, try to make them better understand the vital role that education plays in the health of the state and the nation. I really don't think that it's likely that we're going to have a sustainable GoFundMe account, so that's kind of off the table. One of Donna's two ovens is breaking down, so I really don't think that bake sales are the solution in the long run. I think that the Emerald Foundation does wonderful things, and it may be possible to expand the role of the Emerald Foundation, although it would require more involvement by more people on a more sustained basis, because we can't depend on a small committee to constantly go out. I do appreciate the money that Colgate gives us. I'm not in a position to judge whether the money in lieu of taxes that they provide to us, whether we should be grateful for that because of their largesse, or whether we should be skeptical about whether they're really carrying their weight. I think that Colgate, in their efforts to expand their faculty, and to renew their faculty, that the quality of this school ought to be a central concern. I think that they have demonstrated their understanding of that with regard to this school and CNS. So, you know, I applaud anybody who can squeeze more money out of Colgate. But let's face it, we, for the most part, we're living in a climate where we're going to have to be really, really wise, because I don't think that enormous, sustainable increases in revenue are really in the picture. I do like Ellen's idea. I can't finish my thought in 10 seconds, because it had to do with creating a magnet school, which is a complicated process.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, our final question. Aside from personnel costs and operating expenses for the buildings, a significant portion of the budget in New York districts goes for unfunded mandates. Could you explain what some of those are for the public? Ellen?
Oh boy. Honestly, can I list the unfunded mandates off the top of my head? No, I cannot list for you what they are, because I feel like so many of them have evolved over the years. They just blend into what has to be done as part of business to keep school going. I think you're talking about, essentially, you know, what an unfunded mandate is, is things that the state is requiring that schools do, but they're not providing any extra funding in which to get that job done. So all of the reporting that has to be done, all of the... Again, I would rather not misspeak, and just simply say there have been so many things that have rolled down that I've lost track of them, because they qualify as the price of doing business. And rather than misspeaking on anything, I'm going to stay there.
Thank you, Ellen. Great.
I'm not sure I could do much better than Ellen, so I feel her pain. We're asked to do testing, but there's no additional resources for doing the grading. Teachers have taken out of the classroom in order to in order to grade or perform certain tasks that the state now mandates. I am not an expert on special education, but every year, there are more and more requirements with regard to special education, more regulations that are expensive to implement. I wholly endorse the need to meet the needs of kids with special needs, but the school is, or rather, the state is mandating them and not providing adequate resources or realistic means by which small communities such as ours can meet those needs in a responsible way. So, I'm dapping the question, I can't do better than that.
Thank you. Travis?
You saved the gotcha question for last, huh? I have a fair idea of a couple things, but kind of what Ellen spoke to, I'm not going to speak on it, because I don't want to say an inaccurate thing, which is something I think it's important to do as a board member, too. If you don't know something, you shouldn't say it, because you're speaking for the board, for the school. So, if you're spreading false information, it's a bad thing. I do think this speaks to something I said before, though. If I don't know something, I'm going to ask the questions to find out. One possible state mandate is, we didn't talk about the focus district designation much tonight, and that's a shame. Basically, what happened is the state mandated that all of your students, by their demographics, reach the same layers of success. Well, the state found out through their data that our economically disadvantaged students were not growing as learners at the same rate of the rest of the students in the school, which is unfortunate. So they designated us the focus district. And they gave us training and grant money to fix this problem. A lot of things we talked about, East Park, NWEA test. So they've told us that these students must excel at the same rate, which is absolutely true, that has to happen. But they're saying, here's the money you have to fix it, but in two years, that money disappears, and you either need to find a way to pay for what you're using that money for now, learn from what you've done. But the same standards are there after the focus district money runs out. So that is a state mandated, it's a state mandate that they don't give you money for. They give you money for once you're in that designation, but then they just kind of kick you aside. That's probably the best example I can think of, is the focus district designation.
Thank you, Travis. Well, we've gone through 15 questions. And I want to thank the candidates who are here tonight for answering those, and for... I want to thank the candidates who are here tonight for answering those and for your enthusiasm and your drive to serve the school and the students. At this point, we are going to end up with some closing statements from each of the candidates. You'll have two minutes. Harry, will you please give your closing statement?
This was less fun than I thought it was going to be. But I still want the job, and I still think that I can do a good job with it. As I said, I believe that I know the school well. I believe that the fact that I've got close friendships with teachers, with administrators, with staff members, the fact that although I don't want to micromanage, I want to actually be in the building so that I remain in touch with the interests and concerns of students, teachers, faculty, staff, administrators, doesn't mean hands-on, but it means engaged. I want to be an engaged member of the board. I want to serve this community. I think I can do a good job at it, and I thank you very much for your attendance tonight.
Thank you, Eric. Travis?
First off, I think it's worth noting, I know she had to leave, but Terry Monte is one of the two seats that we have to fill. Terry has done a lot of work for this board, a lot of hard time has gone into it, so she needs to be thanked, first off. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Thank you to the Rotary for hosting. I'm hoping you liked hearing about my vision for HCS. Some of you still might be up in the air on deciding which of the two of us are worth your vote. As you make that decision, I hope you take into account what I've said tonight and know that I would take being a board member very seriously. Just look at this binder full of notes I've been going through, which is kind of making me stumble a little bit here tonight. As a board member, I would always strive to be prepared. I think that's very important. My education taught me all aspects of running a business. My profession teaches me the importance of proper planning, quality, and keeping up with new technologies and strategies. Second job I once had was managing a restaurant, where I received extensive managerial training and learned the importance of building relationships. I value teamwork and communication. HCS will only thrive when all parties feel welcome and appreciated. HCS will face tough decisions in the near future. Give me the opportunity, and I will provide fresh ideas and push for open communication. Fiscal responsibility and accountability are important qualities that I bring to the table. I firmly believe in leading by example. So on May 16, I'd ask for your vote. Lastly, I think it's worth saying, I'm sure you two would feel the same way too, when this is all over, if you guys have any questions you'd like to ask us privately, I'm all up for it. Come and ask me, if you can come up with one. We have, what, 15? And last, we didn't talk, but how much do you get paid for being a board member?
It's a lot.
Is it?
It's going to double next year.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing.
Volunteering is something I really appreciate doing, and I feel that being a board member is one of the ultimate things you can do to volunteer to your community, and I care deeply about this community. So I would love the opportunity to be on the board.
Thank you, Travis. Ellen, your closing statement.
I want to thank Travis and, oh my gosh, thank Travis and Harry for being here too, and for having the enthusiasm and the interest and to keep us all on our toes. And thank everybody out there for being here this long and the patience to hear all that and the interest to be here in the first place. I think for me, and Harry's the one who said it earlier, it comes back to kids and community. And everything the school board does needs to filter through the questions of, how does this help our kids? Is this right for our community? And is it responsible for our community? And finding the path to make all those things meet. I think the one thing that I sense from the culture and the climate and the school board having been on it is a loss of continuity, and again, which may have been a term that one of the two of you used earlier. I'm in my third year as a school board member, and I'm one of the most senior school board members. There has been a lot of turnover recently. And so, like I said, I feel like we've started baby steps, and if every year, we're replacing the people who have started making those baby steps, it's hard to build on those blocks, and it's hard to rebuild that trust that has been an issue. And so, like I said, that and the fact that it's taken three years for me to figure out what the heck is going on, I feel like is one of the really strong reasons that I wanted to run again. It would be nice to feel like you're hitting the ground running instead of just trying to figure out which end is up. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Again, I want to congratulate the three candidates here for their desire to serve, for their dedication, their interest. You all are very sincere on what you want to do to help the school and students and its teachers and staff. We wish you all the best of luck. As I think Travis mentioned earlier, the three of the candidates will be here. If you'd like to come up and ask questions individually, I'm sure they'll be happy to answer. With that, Dr. A., do you have anything you?
No, but thank you all, and thank you for coming out, and they'll be giving autographs at the end. That's it. (applause)